I'm not waving at the audience, I'm waving at the camera. That means they start. Good evening, welcome to the July 27th zoning board of appeals for Hyde Park. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance, everybody please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have reviewed the minutes from the last meeting and I would entertain a motion, in fact, I will move for the approval of those minutes, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The minutes stand approved. First item on the agenda is Camp Victory 20-15Z. We need to open, I would move that we open that public meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are unfortunately waiting for the state?
County Department of Public Works.
The county Department of Public Works for their results of a study, otherwise we are prepared to act. So in deference to that, we will move our hearing on the Camp Victory Lake to be continued to August 24th.
I make a motion, we move to August 24th.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Let me, for the audiences probably wondering why we only have three up here. One of our members is out of town and another member an hour ago tested positive for COVID. So you've got the three of us and that is a quorum and so we have the ability to work and act and we will be doing that tonight. The second, next item is the Rite Aid, item 21-19. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Do you, let me first, a motion, I move that we open the public hearing for Rite Aid, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Welcome back.
Thank you, nice to be here.
I know you're tired of seeing us, but we love to see you.
I believe we covered everything last time and it was basically, all questions were answered, drawings approved or looked at and I believe it was the county response we were just waiting on?
And we did, we did receive that. Is there, are there any other public, anybody here has any other comments on the Rite Aid proposal? Madam Secretary, anything new?
No. I would just like to state for the record that Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development responded that it's a matter of local concern.
Okay, so we are prepared to make that decision. Do we have any questions from four members?
No.
Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You don't have to say anything more, we're gonna now have a resolution. Do you wanna, you wanna take this one? We have a resolution.
This is a resolution to grant an area variance, Rite Aid signage, one Crum Elbow Road, date July 27th, 2022, resolution number 21-19Z. Whereas the applicant GNS Group LTD initially submitted an application on September 19th, 2021, for an area variance to increase the maximum permissible graphic and/or letter height, sign size, symbol or graphic dimension, and cumulative signage square footage to rebrand and replace all signs at the site, which currently contains a Rite Aid, the project on property located at one Crum Elbow Road identified as tax parcel number 133200-6165-03-429214 in the East Park Business District, the site end. Whereas the proposed signage is depicted on a signage plan entitled Rite Aid Store Number 07849, prepared by Universal Signs and Service Inc., dated April 30th, 2021, and revised on September 29th, 2021, January 11th, 2022, March 3rd, 2022, and finally, June 8th, 2022. Whereas on November 3rd, 2021, my resolution, by resolution number 2021-36, the Hyde Park Planning Board granted the applicant a discretionary bonus to increase the maximum letter size of 10 inches to 16.25 inches in height, a maximum symbol size in any direction from 10 inches to 16.25 inches, and an increase of 1 inch for the word pharmacy for the proposed wall sign facing intersection of Route 9G and Crum Elbow Road on an approximately distance of 125 feet from the entry. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals, it makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law on Hyde Park zoning, or section 108 point, or 33.6B2 regarding the requested variances. One, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to a nearby property. The requested increases to letters, symbols, sign, face, area, and quantity of signs on the property will allow Rite Aid to continue to represent easily itself and effectively to passersby traveling along Route 9G and/or Crum Elbow Road. Furthermore, the proposal as a whole brings the property into more compliance. All proposed signage reuses existing structures and mounts, the new designs are not intrusive or out of character with the area which is heavily commercialized. The site is not changing in use or in type of business, this area is well known as a commercial district. As the variances primarily allow for larger logos and words on signs and at an established business, the requested variances will not have a significant impact on a neighborhood or negatively affect nearby properties. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variances. The applicant is part of a nationwide retail chain that is currently undergoing rebranding for all stores and this requires replacement of the signs on the building. The benefits sought mainly maintaining consistency with signage at Rite Aid locations, protecting intellectual property rights and ensuring brand recognition may only be achieved by the granting of the requested variances to make the signs readable from the roadways. Pursuant to New York State laws, zoning boards of appeal are required to grant only the minimum variances necessary, if any, for an applicant to receive intended benefit. The applicant could potentially reduce the size of letters and symbols, reduce the size of individual signs, but doing so would likely cause the signs to be out of scale with the building or their structures and make them harder to read given the distances from Route 9G and Crum Elbow Road. The applicant was given the option to either remove a wall-mounted sign or a free standing sign and they had elected to remove the very large wall-mounted sign facing Route 9G and keep the freestanding monument sign. This option allows the applicant to bring the cumulative sign square footage in compliance while still representing itself to passersby on Route 9G. Number three, some of the requested variances are numerically substantial, but they are not aesthetically substantial and their impact will not be substantial. The scale, the letters and symbols of the wall signage and its subsequent increased square footage are all proportionate to the size of the walls and building which it is displayed. The increase in number of freestanding signs also appropriate given the lot size, orientation, number of sides of the building, and tree lines surrounding the property. Two variances for the wall-mounted signage have been made less substantial as the planning board has granted discretionary bonuses based on distance from the road. For letter heights of Rite Aid, the planning board granted the allowance up to 16.25 inches and the applicant has requested a variance for an additional .5 inches. For pharmacy, on this same sign, the applicant does not require a variance after receiving an additional 1-inch allowance from the planning board. For the symbol, the planning board granted an allowance up to 16.25 inches and the applicant has requested a variance for an additional 7.75 inches. All these requested letter and symbol dimensions are smaller than what was currently on the signs and any impacts will be smaller too. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Allowing increases in letter and symbol size, quantity of signs and sign face, square footage beyond that, what is permitted by the zoning board will not result in the signs having any significant adverse effects on the environment. The site and general area are already heavily developed with commercial businesses. No ground disturbances will occur as a result of replacing the signs. All existing mounting structures are being reused. No adverse effects have been identified as a result of the current signs and no further negative effects are anticipated. The impact the signs would have on the environment would be nearly identical if letters, symbols, quantity of signs, and sign face square footage complied with the zoning law. And five, the difficulties are self-created. Though the existing signage conformed to the code at time of installation, any changes to the signage must come into compliance with the current regulations. Rite Aid chose to rebrand and replace all existing signage at stores nationwide, thereby creating the difficulties the company now faces regarding Hyde Park zoning restrictions. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions, payment of all fees and escrow.
It's been moved.
Do we want to make a motion to correct this?
Yes. Make a motion to correct the resolution.
Adding grants and placing denies?
Grant instead of denied.
I'd make a motion.
I'm second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The motion is, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, would you take the poll of the board, please?
James Agrewal is absent, Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly is absent, Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, now I need to go to planning.
They're ready for you.
Sure they are. Can I get a, when can I get a copy of the resolution?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is 22-06 Zombico, 120 River Road. I would move to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have somebody from, we do, welcome. How are you?
Good.
Oh, here. Do we get a movie too? No? Okay. Now, let me. At the time, at the last, at the last meeting, we had asked to do a site visit and we have subsequently had that site visit and reviewed the issue of the amount of permeable or impermeable land on this site as well as the height of the building, average height of the building. And we had discussions about that and I believe you have had a chance to look at those and have come up with some additional options that may bring the variance into a smaller amount.
That is.
I'm sorry?
Might we go somewhere where you can see, are we allowed, permitted to walk around?
Sure.
Um.
Sure.
Yes, we did, we, the owners said that they'll put in the porous pavement, or not porous pavement, porous pavers and the drainage necessary, they'll take on the expense of that. So we reduced the impervious cover to 16%.
16% from 23% if I believe right?
Right, and the zone is 15%.
And the zoning is 15%, so you've brought it down from 23% to 16%.
To 16%.
And you've done that with pavers and is there any other thing you've done?
The porous pavers, but we added extra porous pavers in the courtyard and then up by the garage, the little utility garage.
And what about in the driveway coming in, is that still?
That's still pavement because it's, we don't want to get that torn up by vehicles coming in and out.
Okay, now, the handling of water off of that impervious?
It all goes just to the west, right out to the river.
It goes to the west, how does it get to the river?
Just sheets, sheet flows, it just flows right off the site out to the river.
So you have nothing that you're building in in terms of, my term, French drain or anything else that will move the water?
It's not really neat because most of it's going to be from.
Go down from here and then it's just gonna flow across there. So most of it.
In the, on the west side of the house?
Right.
Correct, how about the driveway that is, that is impervious? Is there any way to, so, help me understand on the driveway, that's what I'm concerned about.
This is the driveway, this is the, this is part of the driveway, the runway long here.
Okay, what is the material just off the driveway that's gonna direct that, the water?
Lawn.
Just a lawn? Okay. Now, when you get to the end of the west, end of the property, there's a significant drop-off there which goes right into the railroads. Does the railroad get the water or how is it?
They get it now, so they can continue to go.
Okay. All right.
How much of that water is gonna go north?
North, not, the north actually, right here comes on and right here flows right up through here. There's a little low spot that's common on both lots, right here.
So the slope of that off of the driveway is sloping toward the south or to the west?
Sloping to the west.
Okay.
There's a spot sort of right here where it drains this way.
Okay. Okay. And the house, the water coming off of the house is, is all the drainage coming to the west?
There'll be a little bit of that.
Yeah, a little bit in there, but off of the roof.
Yeah, it's all gonna continue to go up here like it does now.
Okay. Okay. Okay, good, so we're moving from 23 to 16% coverage? Okay, that's excellent, excellent, okay.
And what's the total square footage of the house?
The footprint or the?
The whole thing.
5470.
For the, for the house?
For the footprint.
Footprint, including?
That doesn't include the second floor, it doesn't put the lawn that way through the street.
So it's like 1500?
No. No, the footprint of the house is 54 and then add to it, I guess another way to ask is what's the square footage of the house? So it sounds like we have then 54 plus the second floor plus the lower level. And the lower level footprint is about the same as the house print. 32, so we're up to 70, so we're looking at about, about 8,000 or 9,000 feet. Okay, I wouldn't want to heat that, but okay. All right, so, questions on the impervious issue? Okay, talk to me about the heights of the building then.
Okay, the height of the building, they'll bring in additional fill and they got it down to 36 feet and.
So that's a foot above?
A foot. And that's primarily because of that slope that walked out there.
Okay, all right, so we brought it from three feet over to one foot over, is that correct? Okay. Is there anything, in doing that, are you changing the contour of the, of the house at all?
It's going to be, not, not really, it's, it'll just be a little bit of fill right along the four sides.
Okay. But as we look at it now, from the front, the profile will be the same? And the other profiles will be the same? Okay, I see.
On both sides?
On both sides. Okay. Good, so the slope will not be as great? Correct. Okay, good, all right. Is there anything else we should know in terms of the change? No? Okay, all right, good, good, that's very good, okay. Let me ask, are there people, are there people who would like to make comments on this? Yes ma'am?
If you could just come right up to the microphone.
Yeah, come up to the, and if you'll speak really close to the microphone.
And identify yourself.
Absolutely, my name is Patricia Wager, I'm Ellen and Dick Wager's daughter. They are one, own and have lived for 10 years at 114 River Road.
Which is to the north of this building?
Yes.
Of this, of this site?
Yes, and my parents have submitted a written letter explaining their concerns, which you have. I don't think there's any need for us to read it, but we're happy if you want us to. But in sum, what we are most concerned about is that there is, my parents are experiencing additional water on their site already. We have spoken to Mark about it, he's willing to work with us. We brought up an architect to talk to Mark and we, but we need to see a drainage plan. We need to figure it out because my architect does not view the water as going where Mark's team is and.
Which is what we were just talking about.
Right, and the, our concern, you know, if, get me the plan. I gave Mark before tonight and then again tonight, an email and I've sent him an email asking for the plan. But we would like to see how it is that that water is going to end up in the back because from when, from your standing on the property line, the water is coming towards you. It's high to low and I know that Mark's engineer was showing me a topographical map where there appeared to be, where it was my parents' property that was higher and it is possible that for some small piece in the front, that's true. But as this property is running north and towards my folks' house, they're getting a lot more. Additionally, size-wise, as we've told Mark, all of the other houses on the street, as outlined in their letter and attached to their letter, we put the, the printouts from the county property records site that talks about all the sizes in the subdivision, the Riverside subdivision, and all of the other houses in the subdivision run smaller. And the house is, as it's going to, already going to be considerably larger than anything else on the street, like double, the largest, and the, and on top of that, we're worried about the, the impact of the views on my parents' house, it's a pretty house and we always knew there was going to be another house there. But my parents are concerned about the scope, the overall size of the house, but most of all, their property is already getting significant runoff. And, you know, Mark said, you know, his business is fixing this, we get that, but we, we would like our resolution to be part of the plan and not something we just do separately. We would like, you know, we would, I've got an architect who does this, that he's a construction consultant, he's NASA Suffolk engineers and architects, he works for municipalities, he knows this business of drainage and, you know, he will talk to Mark and work with Mark and, but we just want to make sure that my parents aren't gonna suffer additional water because they are already feeling it. They're, the guy who cuts their lawn can't cut that corner and he always has in the past. So on top of it, they've lost some plants that appear to have drowned. So it's not, we are, I think that my parents are looking forward to being good neighbors with the Vombicos. It's just that we want to make sure that in the, in the process, that their property doesn't suffer. Anything else, Mom? Thank you.
All right. Then it sounds like we need some further conversation between you, your individuals and people representing the.
Right, Mark has already agreed to send me, and I, he said, just, you sent him an email, so I sent him an email while we were sitting here waiting. I copied my architect, who has a team of engineers, and we'll get back to him very quickly. But we just, we just want to make sure that my parents are not going to have water coming on.
So.
More.
In summary, I think we need some, the two, the two parties need to have some more discussion, come back perhaps this next time with a solution that fits that. And I want to commend them for the progress that you've made, it's been significant in terms of reducing the imperviousness and the height, which is very commendable. And I think this is, while this gets into the impervious issue in terms of how you handle the water coming off, it, it's not insignificant in the fact that climate change, we are going to see significant changes in the amount of water that we're getting, a number of you have heard of St. Louis and what happened this week. We're going to get some of that, so I think as we look at the handling of water on property, it becomes even more important that these solutions be discussed ahead of time. So I would suggest that the two of you come back, we'd like to continue this public hearing until next time and.
Appreciate it.
Any other? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Kelly Leibl, I've been before you before, so I also represent the applicant. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of issues.
Can you get a little closer?
Sure, the size of the house, I think, is not necessarily the issue before this board. The issue before this board is.
It is not, I agree, even though it's double the size of the average house and that.
Understood, yes, understood. But the issue before this board is the two area variances, so one is the height and the other is the total impervious, and so we've worked very hard to reduce that total impervious. And even if this property met the 15% requirement, I think the neighbors would still have an issue. So what we're asking this board is to consider these area variances tonight. We recognize that there is some discussion relative to the stormwater. You know, I'm sure that this town is familiar with Berger Engineering and Michelle Zurfus and she is probably one of the most experienced people with respect to stormwater and carries, you know, high degrees with respect to stormwater. She has presented this board and identified that we're going to address the stormwater issue. So we're asking this board if you would consider addressing these area variances tonight so that we can move on. We still need to go to the planning board and we also need to pursue the building permits with the town and we're getting very close to the end of the building season at this point. So the stormwater issue is, you know, we understand and Michelle has identified the solution. I'm not sure if it's a solution that the neighbors understand, but regardless, again, of whether or not this is 15% or 16%, we're talking a 1% issue relative to the stormwater.
I understand that, yeah. I still think that the two parties need to have a discussion about this, simply in terms of handling that water coming off and.
Resolve.
And resolve, and resolve that, I appreciate your comments.
And if I may, as well, because we see that the board had, or that the applicant has made significant decreases in the variances being requested, I think that's understood. It's not lost on the board, but if you can make such headway, then what is preventing you from meeting the required? But if you can make such headway, then what is preventing you from meeting the requirements of the code as far as lot coverage and as far as the height of the building? I mean, it's a vacant lot, so you can build whatever you want. So the standard is the code.
There's a certain amount that will be cost. There's already significant cost to put in what's there. And I... That's not a complete thing that you consider, but that's also in the recent rulings on zoning and other things that... If there's a huge cost added on to achieve that 1%, that's... That will be...
I don't know that we are, at this point, arguing that you have to be at 15% or 16%.
I believe that.
She's saying that.
Your attorney just did that.
That is her, yeah.
And I realize she's your attorney. So...
So cost for what? The whole construction?
Let's just say I added in more pavers that, you know, they get torn up during the winter.
Okay.
Or torn up from the oil trucks and that. But I could add it in. We can go away, and the neighbors... You know.
I think what we're saying is we can meet 15% by adding more pavers. So if that's the case, and that's what the zoning board wants so that we can act late on late issue, then that's a discussion.
And that means, though, that he's got a lot more maintenance, because it's going to be in areas that get...
What I'd like you to do is I'd like you... I'd like to come back... I want to continue this public hearing until next time. We're prepared to make a decision, but we'd like to have you have a discussion in terms of the handling of that water on that northwest corner of your property.
Okay, the existing northwest corner that's already flooding?
That's where the flooding.
So you want us to fix the existing flooding?
I want you to have a discussion with the other party who has some ideas and seeing some damage on their property, or potential damage on their property because of the runoff, which is part of what we've been discussing all along.
Right.
And the runoff is not going to get easier. It's not... So if we're looking at a 100-year flood, we're down to that being in a 10-year. And rain, and I don't want to tell you all of that. I didn't tell you all that.
I just want to get on the record that they experience flooding now. That there's existing flooding even before this house is built. I just want that on the record.
Okay, thank you, good. So a motion to continue the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I was just going to ask the applicant, when they started construction for regrading on the property, how long ago that was, and if the timeframe of the increased water on your property coincides with that or not.
I think that this is... I mean, you can ask them, but I got a feeling that, looking at the area, it's a low area down in that corner. So I think everything just kind of settles there right now.
Right, and with the disturbance of the ground, and some of that water currently comes toward the street, and it will maintain that. I think you're going to...
Right. It's still... It's not really changing the overall drainage directions.
Right.
And part of the lot, there's only a, you know, the northern part that will go... Continue to go to that northwest corner. The southern part of the house, and the southern part of the lot, will continue to go to the southwest corner. And others will continue to go west. A little bit in the front will continue to go down to the street. So it's not really changing the directions.
No, but the surface change, the trees got cut down. There are other reasons that the water flow may have changed in the last several months since they started the regrading. That's all I wanted to...
Okay. So the two parties are going to have a discussion, and we will come back. And we're prepared to act at the next meeting.
And I think that that question, though, from the zoning administrator is justified as well. Just if we could find, or you could provide some details as to when the construction started. That was what you wanted to know, correct?
Well, I mean, it's obvious that runoff is going to increase when you take down the trees, when you start moving soil and pulling rock out. You're changing the topography, so the flow is going to change.
Right, and right now, there's no... There's no lawn. There's no tops.
Right.
Topsoil's been shifted off, and it's a very rocky site.
Yep.
So a lot of it just was rock with thin dirt and then...
But the trees and the soil that was there did hold some water, and now it's not.
Some, but it was a poor woods.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's move on. 2208Z, Mr. Ishak? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me first... A motion to open the... Continue the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? Good, welcome back. And welcome to you.
Yes.
Let me pause here a minute before the committee is going to go into a brief executive session about the issue. Be very brief, and we will be back in five. So everybody, take a breath.
We can just do a motion.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We will be right back.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
You in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, okay. Let's continue on, please, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And you are, sir, you are-
I am new here. My name is Daniel Ischak. I am the owner, Christopher Ischak's brother, and I'm also the property manager for 34 Green Bush now.
Okay.
Along with other properties.
Okay.
I'm a real estate agent, real estate investor, and also manage a few properties as well. We discussed it pretty much as a family, and since Chris is away a lot of the times, I'm taking full responsibility in making all the decisions on the property itself. So I walked it yesterday, and I spoke to all the tenants as well, but I know there were some questions that we needed answered, and also, I know my brother Chris sent you guys an email.
Mm-hmm.
Before we get into that, I do want to just shed some light and some background as to the initial purchase of the property. I have the initial listing, and it was listed as a two-unit, a multifamily home, so there was some confusion because he purchased it all cash. There wasn't the homework or the due diligence from anybody doing all the checks as you would normally do when you do have a mortgage. He was a first-time homebuyer, you know, his whole savings went into this, and he was very happy at the purchase. He lived in one unit, and he was renting the other two, assuming it was a three-unit. So when this did come up, he was very shocked, and he had no knowledge of it. If he did, he would have rectified it and came to it right away. So that was the issue at first. What happened was that he lived in it for three, four years, and then he moved, purchased a single-family home because of his new job, and with his new job now, he's away three weeks and home for two weeks. So he's always away for three weeks and then comes home for two weeks. He does have a six-month-old, so it's, a lot of things are happening now, and it's very difficult. So I'm not trying to give any excuses or anything, I just want to shed some light on his situation now, and as to the decision it is before us about me taking over everything. So this way, we'll have somebody in the area local who will always visit the property and keep up with the, with the tenants as well.
Okay. The, the major issue still continues to be the fact that you're on a piece of property that is eight tenths of a, of an acre, and the requirement for two-family is an acre, and you're asking for a variance of basically 25% to, to allow two-family to, to, to exist there. Is that-
Yes, that's what we're asking for. Because this was always, I don't know if you, you guys visited the property, but you haven't been in it. It's a very big home, and when we walked it, when he walked in, when he first purchased it, it was separated as a three-unit. So there's separate access on one, on the right side, separate access on the left side, and the middle access. So we, everyone assumed there was a three-unit. So it was always being rented that way. There was three kitchens in it and everything like that, so it was always under the assumption that it was a three-unit, so that's why he purchased it. Now, for, I don't know how many years it was like that, and of course, I said the way it was listed, that's the way he purchased it, but bringing it to a single-family home, I don't think would change anything. It may actually make it worse because even if we were to sell it, or someone else were to purchase it, that home being marketed in the market now would appeal to somebody with an extended family, or like a mother-daughter setup, so where they would illegally rent it, or something in that nature, which would actually bring more people there. So you'll have 12, 15 people as a single family, as opposed to having the one person we have now on the left side, and the right side is actually empty now, and my brother's actually, he's allowing to just keep it as a two-unit and not rent the other use. He's actually looking into making it, you know, one of my offices, or making that somewhere he can go to or put more items into. So he's actually willing to take that loss to actually lessen it down, if it is approved for a two-unit, to have less occupancy there.
There's also a tax issue.
Well, what, after we received the communication from the owner on Friday, which did help shed some light-
Of course.
-I think, to the questions that have been asked by the board members, so it was much appreciated, and we looked into just how the property had been taxed, really to see kind of where-
Yep.
Where did the miscommunication happen? Because part of the town, the building department specifically, had it listed one way, and the tax department had it listed as a two-family.
Okay, okay.
So we do understand that at least as far back as-
2012.
2012, it was taxed as a two-family. Now, that's never been contested, and it does appear from the property information that the town has, that the code that changed it from a single-family to a two-family occurred around 1992 or 93. So if that's the case, then from the information we have, usually what happens is whoever owned it at the time chopped it up, made it into two units. It was not legalized, so we don't know what happened inside of there.
Okay.
Like you said, nobody's been in it.
Yep.
So even if this board were to grant the variance, that's just kind of the first step of many to legalize the work that's been done, because somebody has to then apply for the building permit, the owner-
And the walkthrough, to make sure-
Or the official transfer.
Yes, I understand that, yep.
And there is a lot of oversight with multi-unit buildings, because you have many people living there, and just the safety precautions that are involved.
Of course, of course.
You would probably have to go before the Department of Health, where they take issues. So this is just, the only thing within their scope is the variance of whether two families can live there, but we did see where the miscommunication may have occurred as far as a certificate of occupancy. It looks like some due diligence was done, and it was told that it wasn't required. But if there was any modification, which there clearly was here, then it would be needed. The issue is just that the permits were never applied for.
I got you.
So that's just, I wanted to bring that up. I don't know if anybody else has any other questions?
I own a few multifamily homes.
Yes.
They all have certificates of occupancies. If I wanted to sell them, and somebody bought them, if they had cash, they wouldn't have to get a certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
So that's a gamble.
Yes, and that's where, where he was, it was his first purchase. I wasn't his real estate agent at the time, I was unlicensed then, but, you know, it, it was, that was the issue. He didn't know. He looked for his agent at the time, his attorney, and nobody guided him in that direction, so-
So he may want to look at it as he's had 20, or how many years of the house?
About six, seven years in there.
About six or seven years. He's had the advantage of getting revenue from it, and, you know, he, now it's at the point where, you know, you gotta pay the paper.
Well, no, I understand that, and what, what I also, like, there was other concerns about the cleanliness and everything like that in the home, and I just wanted to talk about the whole scope of everything, and then with the neighborhood as well, because I did walk the neighborhood. You know, I was there a lot yesterday, and I just wanted to shed some light that if, you know, we do decide to keep this home, you know, we are legally bound to, we can also rent it to a large family that that can occupy it, which may be even the same situation that we're in, you know, but what I want to tell you is that that won't be an issue going forward, no matter what gets moved on, because I will actually be there. I actually live in Poughkeepsie, so I'm local. We actually, you know, with the email, he showed you, you know, everything that was rectified. There's actually a list of things that I also personally want to take care of to keep up the cleanliness and make sure it's perfect. I'm very strict like that, and I just want to make sure that whoever is occupying there, that they keep it as a home, they keep their peel, the look of it, everything like that. Even just small things like bikes or anything, put it on the side, put it in the garage, you know, do, do certain things of that nature. Yes, tucked away, because it appeals better, you know, when you pull up to the home, it looks better. We're looking into the budget as far as making the driveway better there because getting a new paved driveway, I don't know if you've seen it there. So we're actually looking to do a lot of things in that home. So actually, us keeping the home would be beneficial. He takes pride in his properties, because it's the first one, he wants to hold it. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, everything's taken care of, so we want to invest more money into it. And making it a two-family is going to be something that we can actually, you know, invest more into. You know, I don't know if it helps the town, it doesn't help the town, selling it, and then, you know, knowing what's going to happen after that, because people, the way it's shaped, people are going to take advantage of illegally renting it and doing everything like that. I've been in the business five years, and that's what everybody's looking for now, because they can help with their mortgage, getting that extra rent payment. So I just, if it's possible to actually make this, you know, a legal two-unit, it would be beneficial throughout, I believe.
I guess it goes back to the very basic question. The, the requirement in Hyde Park now is for two-family, an acre.
Yes.
You're 25% below that. Why should we give you a variance for that?
I mean, pretty much what I was, what I was just stating, pretty much that we're going to make sure that the property is going to be well-maintained, as opposed to any other owner coming into it. We're going to make sure, and now what we've actually done, having me there, you know, three to four times a week, is that I'm going to be on top of every single issue that comes up. You're never going to have any kind of issues coming up with the appeal of the home, any noise violations, anything like that. You know, I can't address everything that goes on in the home if it's going to be a rental, but, you know, I can enforce strict rules there so that these items don't come up again. I know what the law states, and I'm just, you know, asking for a little bit of help to make it pretty much what it was for years, being used as, but just not on paper.
And to clarify, this is for residents, because you mentioned the potential of using part of it for an office.
Well, not, not a business.
That would be a separate-
No, no, not commercial office, just somewhere for me to have an owner, owner unit.
Okay.
Yes, not actually a commercial, no, no.
But that you know.
Yes.
We're going to look at it like, is it a commercial office?
Yes, yeah, no, 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 not like that, no.
Is that what you really want?
I totally understand. No, just, just somewhere we can go to put other items, maybe some storage stuff there, but we also are willing to just keep it as that legal two-unit and not rent that extra space there.
I think, one of the concerns, I think we need to, with your new information and the letter that your brother sent to us, which is helpful, I'd like to review that with, with the rest of the board, and I'd like to suggest that we continue this until next month, so that we might be able to have, I think, a full confidence in the decision that we're going to make.
I make a motion that we continue this public hearing until next month.
August, August 24th.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So the information you've given us is, is very helpful.
Okay.
The actions you've taken, I think-
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you guys, and I truly do apologize for my brother being away and not getting the answers that you need right away, so I'm truly sorry about that, that it took so long and rescheduling, but I will be here for the next meeting, and I want to give you guys my information as well, so just in case you have any questions that come up, you can call or email me anytime.
Okay, good.
You can come do that with me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we will need a letter of authorization for you.
Okay.
From your brother.
Can I be emailed, or just have your next time recommend?
Email. You can email it, would be good. If we have it, we need it before-
Yeah, that's why I want your contact information, so that we can iron that out, because I, I know he's giving you permission, but because he's the owner and the applicant, then we do have to get his permission.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to 2211, the Doobman property?
Doob.
I'm sorry. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a new face, but I believe the last meeting, my father was here on behalf of-
He was.
My brother.
He was, and just refresh, before we do that, I'd like to move, that we continue the public meeting on this.
Open.
Second?
Open.
Open.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good, okay, now we're official. Good. Go ahead.
So my understanding is, there was some information that was sent to the board that was required for the continuance of request for the approval of a five-foot side yard setback instead of the 10-foot, which I-
That's correct.
My understanding.
Okay.
I believe everything was sent in terms of a basic site plan, Star Gas, the generator. I have all the information, if there's anything that you need.
It was, and we received that, and we've had a chance to review that. Any questions from members counsel?
No.
Is there anybody from the public that is going to make comments on it? Madam Secretary, and we have any public, nothing? Madam Secretary, do we have any public, nothing?
No, I did not receive any comments.
Okay, if not, I would.
I'll make a motion to.
Close, we've got to close the.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Then we have a resolution. You want to read this?
I'd like to read this resolution. Resolution to Grand Area Variance, Michael Dobbin, 16 Bercher. Whereas the applicant, Michael Dobbin, has submitted an application for an area variance to install a generator which provides emergency power. I used mine this weekend. To basement water pumps. The project at property located 16 Bercher Avenue, Poughkeepsie, New York, identified as tax parcel 616302587549 in the neighborhood zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on a sketch which we saw prepared by Mr. Dobbin dated May 18, 2022 and annotated with an aerial photo dated the same. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The generator will be situated behind the house and will not be clearly visible from anywhere except the owner's property. The house to the west where the encroachment is incurring is more than 70 feet away from the generator. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The owner's basement floods frequently and they have installed some pumps to mitigate the problem. However, in the event of a power outage, these pumps fail and the basement floods despite prior efforts put forth by the applicant prevent that from occurring. The applicant wishes to install a generator so the pumps may continue to run during power outages. The site and the existing structure limit possible locations. The existing house is within the side yard setback and the lot is narrow in width. According to its specifications, the generator will be situated away from any air intake such as doors or windows. Additionally, the generator will be within a certain distance of the breaker box and pumps for it to work efficiently. Therefore, the proposed location is the ideal choice. The requested variance is numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted setback from 10 to 5 feet, which is 50% decrease. However, this placement encroaches slightly less than the existing house and shed. Any impacts of this encroachment would be less substantial than the house itself and any detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefit to the applicant. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The variance request will have no impact on the surrounding environment. The generator's footprint is small and is used infrequently. As shown in the aerial photo, the neighboring house is a substantial distance from the shared property line, giving these neighbors an extensive buffer from the generator's sound. This generator is used only to provide emergency power to some pumps in the basement in the event of both a flood and power outage. So the noise impact will be infrequent. The difficulty are self-created. The applicant stated the house has needed water mitigation in the basement as long as he has owned it. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Payment of all fees and escrow.
It's been moved and I second this. Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
James Agarwal is absent. Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly is absent. Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes. Yes, sir. Go ahead and put your generator in.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Voight, 22-12. I'd like a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hello.
Aye, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Can you just refresh us quickly about this?
Yes, I'm just looking to redo my home with the same footprint that I have there now with the exception of an overhang.
Okay, we've had a chance to look at the, at the plans. Other questions from the board?
No.
Counsel?
No questions.
Okay. Anybody from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll move when we close the public hearings.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, therefore we have a resolution to Stephanie Voight, 195 Havlin Road, Hyde Park, dated July 27, 2022. Resolution 22-12Z. Whereas the applicant, Paul Tirons, on behalf of the owner, Stephanie Voight, has submitted an application for an area variance to reduce the front yard setback to allow the partial renovation of a house in addition of a covered porch. The project at property located at 195 Havlin Road, identified as tax parcel number 6264-01-160958 in the Greenbelt Zone District, the site. And whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Location Plan, Site Plan, prepared by Synergy Design Architects and Engineering dated August 26, 2021. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the board, zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law of Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be detriment to nearby properties. The variance allows the homecomer to demolish and rebuild a portion of the existing house. The entire house and covered porch are maintaining the same footprint. The additional, the addition of the five-foot overhang above the porch requires a variance despite the concrete slab beneath it. The character of the neighborhood will not be undesirably changed as many of the houses in the immediate area are built within the 50-foot setback and multiple homes possess porches. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The applicant wishes to demolish and rebuild part of the house due to the structure concerns especially as related to the foundation. The homeowner's goal is to have a safer house which is easier to maintain. The existing house was built in 1970 prior to the adoption of the current zoning regulations. If the applicant was made to adhere to current zoning, it would require the complete demolition and relocation of her house by more than 20 feet to the north. The project would be financially infeasible for the applicant. The applicant acknowledges that she could complete individual repairs to remedy some of the outstanding issues, but there are concerns that the repairs would be insufficient. The homeowner prefers to demolish part of the existing structure to ensure the issues with the foundation are adequately fixed. Number two, number three, the requested variance is numerically substantial because it would allow more than 50% reduction of the setback from 50 to 24.3 feet. As stated above, however, the proposed house and porch maintain the same footprint as existing structures. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The house was built within the setback in 1970 and has existed this way for 50 years. No discernible impacts have been noticed. As the project seeks to maintain the same size and footprint of the house, there will be no further impacts. While the applicant has applied for an additional five feet of encroachment, this still maintains the existing footprint of the concrete slab. The variance is required because the applicant seeks to add a roof overhang. The difficulties are self-created since the applicant wants to demolish and renovate the house instead of repairing individual concerns. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise the variance is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow are paid for. This motion, is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Would the secretary pull the board, please?
James Agarwal is absent. Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly is absent. Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I will mail it to you and I'll also forward it to the building department.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
The next item is 1906 Dollar General. Ah ha. I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're going to have to go through all of this.
Yeah, okay. I'll just put it up here in case.
Okay. I would, a motion to continue, open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This variance is to, is to continue the variance that was granted last year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, I'm sorry. Aye.
Yes, good evening. I'm Karen Majanowski from Bowler Engineering representing HSC. Thank you. HSC Hyde Park LLC, the owner of 1 East Dorsey Lane here in Hyde Park where the proposed Dollar General is located. That's correct. We previously received this variance for scale and we're just looking to ask to extend that approval for another year this evening.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public? Madam Secretary, do we have any other comments?
No, I did not receive anything.
Uh, from the board?
Oh, hold on a second.
Did we receive that the violation was?
There was a question in terms of.
Right, yes. So not a public comment, however. I did receive notice from the building inspector that the notice of violation has been remedied.
Okay, so that is taken care of. Okay. No further questions? Counsel?
No questions.
Okay. Therefore, I would, I would move that we close the, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Therefore, we have a resolution?
Can I read that?
I got it. Resolution granting a second extension to an area variance. Dollar General 1 East Dorsey Lane, July 27, 2022. Resolution number 19-06Z-3. Whereas on November 13, 2019, by resolution number 19-06Z, the zoning board of appeals granted an area variance to the applicant, HSC Hyde Park LLC, to permit the demolition of an existing building and construction of a new 7,500 square foot Dollar General retail building along with new access, parking, landscaping, lighting, utilities and store order management. The project at property located at 1 East Dorsey Lane, identified as tax parcel number 6163-02-504633 in the neighborhood business zoning district. And whereas to section 108-33.5F1 of the zoning law, any variance under which the authorized activity has not commenced within one year from the date of issuance is revoked without further hearing or action of the zoning board of appeals. And whereas on September 22, 2021, by resolution number 19-06Z-2, the zoning board of appeals applied a tolling period pursuant to New York State Governor Cuomo's executive order 202, granted an extension of the variance to June 30, 2022. And whereas, 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 whereas the zoning board of appeals has considered the circumstances warranting such an extension and there have been no significant changes in the project or project site that would warrant a different conclusion with respect to the grant or denial of the area variance. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a one-year extension of the area variance for the project two and including June 30, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the?
James Agarwal is absent. Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly is absent. Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Look forward to that coming up.
You'll see it soon.
One or another, we'll see it soon.
Keep your fingers crossed. Thank you. The Boldman Party, 22-13. I'd like a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody from the Boldman?
They are.
On vacation.
They are on a family vacation right now.
Okay, I think though we have had, is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on that? If not, do we have any issues? I don't think we do.
Will you open?
A positive letter from a neighbor, I think.
Yeah, yes, we did.
Yes, we did receive one.
Thank you.
Public comment in favor of the application from. I can't seem to find it. I can look in my email though.
I think we have.
What's the question? From Dan and Allison Nichols, Three Valerie Court?
Yeah.
If you just want it on the records.
Yeah, just put that on the record. Okay. Okay, we've opened it. No, no, there, nobody from the public other than that?
I make a motion we close the public hearing.
I would, you know, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, we have a resolution for that? We have a, yes, we have a resolution.
I can make a resolution.
Okay.
To grant this variance for Helen and Henry Boldren, July 27. Resolution 2213Z. Whereas the applicants and homeowners, Henry and Ellen Boldren, have submitted an application for an area variance to change the front yard setback to complete the construction of a 14-by-16-foot deck on the house at property located at 46 Lawrence Road, identified as tax parcel grid number 616402927571 in the neighborhood zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on a survey map entitled Survey for Boldren, prepared by Michael Dalbo dated July 28, 1986, and annotated aerial photo submitted by Mr. Boldren dated June 8, 2022. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The requested variance will allow for the applicants to replace a deck in need of repair. The size and footprint of the structure will remain the same. The house and deck were built in the 1980s prior to the adoption of the current zoning regulations. As this deck will maintain the exact dimensions and the location of the previous one, there is no change to the character of the neighborhood. Many houses in the area have porches and decks, so it fits the character of the neighborhood. The benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Cannot, I think we got to edit it out.
No, can, can be achieved, yes. That is correct.
Oh, can is okay, okay. The applicant could reduce the size of the deck, therefore removing the need for a variance. Oh, yeah. The applicant stated the contractor would be demolishing the entire deck and installing new footings, so there is no need to maintain the same footprint. The requested variance is not numerically substantial. The requested variance from 50 feet to 46 feet represents approximately a 9% change in the existing front yard setback. The impacts of the variance will also not be substantial. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The structure has existed since 1983 and no environmental impacts have been discerned. The site is in a well-developed neighborhood. The new deck will likely have a positive impact on the visual environment since it is replacing and improving the existing structure. The difficulties are self-created as the applicants wish to replace their deck and all new construction must adhere to current zoning standards. Furthermore, the applicants could reduce the size. could reduce the size of the deck. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following condition: payment of all fees and escrow pursuant to section one-oh-eight dash three-three dash five F-one. The authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise that variance is revoked.
I will second this resolution. Madam Secretary, will you pull the board, please?
James Agawal is absent. Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly is absent. Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes. The motion passes. Let's move on to the next item. The Poser, Poiser? Poiser property. We've been looking forward to that all evening, sir. Welcome.
Good to be here.
We appreciate your patience. Tell us about your project.
I'm just trying to install a ground mount solar system. Unlike a traditional ground mount that goes up about twelve feet, I'm splitting it into two sections, so it's only about seven feet high. And the solar engineer told me the best place to put this is the northeast corner of the property, which is down by the pond slash, or the lake.
Now, we have, we've had a chance to look at some of that. Tell us, I'd like you to talk to a little bit the, you've got a pond just to the, losing my direction here.
East.
The pond is, is it to your east, to your west?
Yep.
To your east.
Yep.
And you've got woods all around?
Correct.
Where you're putting the solar is significant distance, uh, thank you, significant distance from the house.
Correct. Both, I would love to do roof mount, but unfortunately I'm facing the wrong direction.
Okay.
Both the roof lines face west and east.
So?
The ground mount has to face south.
So, you've got clearing space to put the panels?
Correct, yes.
Tell us about the, I'm concerned about the protection of wildlife you've got. That pond is not yours, is it?
No, it belongs to the association.
Association?
All of us. The, I guess, twenty houses surrounding it.
Okay. In terms of the solar panels themselves, are they raised?
Yeah, they're gonna be raised, yeah.
I mean, in terms of the structure they're on?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a metal frame. It's gonna be about two feet off the ground in the front and about seven feet off the ground in the back. It's gonna be at about a twenty-six degree angle.
So it's not impeding any wildlife other than deer? Or we'll have a trouble going?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not putting in pylons, I'm doing ground screws. So all you do is screw right in, so I'm not pouring any cement, doing any.
Okay, all right. I think one of the, one of the things that we wanted to look at is, I think we are trying, Madam Secretary, are we scheduling? Trying to schedule?
This is the public hearing that you and I set in our agenda meeting.
Right.
So we can just continue it to next month and we'll be ready for a resolution.
But I think one of the things we'd like to do is come out and see the site if we can arrange that, just.
Not a problem. I probably didn't want to come out last week.
I'm sorry?
My schedule, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday last week.
Yeah, let's see what we can do. We'll arrange it, we'll arrange the time there. Questions on this?
No.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, I think we're looking forward to seeing it.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I have a question. How much electric do you expect to get out of this array?
Well, the two inverters max out at ten KW each, so the space is gonna be twenty KW.
And will that supply your house and put?
I think it's ninety, about ninety percent. Well, depending on clouds, about ninety percent, yeah.
All right.
So you're, is it for just a general house?
Yeah.
So you're running, what, about ten thousand kilowatts a year?
Well, each inverter is gonna be ten thousand kilowatts.
Two?
Two, yeah.
Two thousand?
Oh, no, ten thousand each.
I'm sorry, okay.
So ten thousand kilowatt inverter and a ten thousand.
So you're gonna generate about twice what your house is gonna take?
No, my house is more than that.
Your house is gonna take all that?
No, my house uses more than that per year. That's why I'm doing the size of the system.
So you?
And you're only allowed to backfeed in the system, I believe, twenty-four kilowatts back into the system, so.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to put another inverter in because I can't backfeed that much. I can't backfeed thirty kilowatts into the system.
So you're not hooked up to backfeed?
I would be, yeah.
Oh, you will be?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is gonna be a battery system. This is gonna be, this is offsetting what I use.
Okay.
So, this is gonna generate, these are my words, and technical, twenty thousand kilowatts?
Yeah, max, yes.
Max a year. And you're using, you'll use?
I use more than that per year. It's, the system right now is, it'll generate about ninety percent of my needs.
Okay, okay, okay. Good. Questions?
It's a grid, it's a grid tie-in system, not a off-grid system. So they call it a grid tie-in.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Then we, I think we said that. I'd like to move that we continue this to?
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth. Is there a second?
A second.
This is an exciting project. Look forward to seeing it and see if we can get you going.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming.
I think we just need to vote on that motion in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None. We're set. Thank you, sir. Finally, the best show of the night. Thank you for your patience tonight, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm here tonight, my name is Pete Ambrose. I'm here tonight representing the owners and applicants for a variance to construct a lap pool on their property, on the main lane in the park. Seems to be the only place that we really can put the pool. The application documents fairly well demonstrate that. I don't think it's gonna have any impact on the river. It's above the flood plain. It is inside the one-hundred-foot setback line. I do have some, in the application documents themselves, I have some information on the amount of area that is actually available, which is not in either the flood plain or the one-hundred-foot stream corridor line on the property. And it works out to be about point one acres.
So you're, we're going into the stream corridor?
Absolutely, like every other building on the property.
Okay. No other site?
Nothing.
I'm trying to see here. This is the private here. Okay.
This is Raymond's?
This is the stream corridor line. Oh, this is the property. Goes along the shoreline of Hudson River Mean High Watermark. Comes across, goes down along the, you know, the track at this point again. This is the stream corridor setback on the property. Because you get it from two sides.
Okay, when you say two sides, getting from the riverside?
So everything is in the?
Here's the river here too.
Ah.
Everything is in the corridor setback already.
Okay, here's the FEMA, here's the FEMA hundred-year flood line.
Yeah, which now becomes twenty-year.
Okay, yeah, right, exactly.
Well, this river in sixty, in sixty years will be seven feet higher.
Well, the DEC would differ on that. They have their own.
I know, they're messed up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Anyway, we're really limited here. So this is a high spot outside of the FEMA flood plain. The elevation of the pool water surface is twelve. The FEMA base flood elevation is eight.
So they can fill the pool whenever it floods?
Well, not really.
When it's pumped.
But my point is, is the Mean High Watermark, the river right now is two, elevation two. So?
The pool is at?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Okay. So it's above?
It's above the river.
Right, it's above the river. And it won't flood out according to what the numbers are today. So in any event, we looked at a couple of different spots. The only other spot that's available that's not either in the hundred-foot setback line or the FEMA flood line is right here, but there's the driveway there. All right? And there's quite a bit of difference in elevation. And if you read the documents, you will see that you really can't, you really can't fit this pool in here. And at this location, it's pretty much blocked by this existing building.
What is that building?
It's a garage with a shed. The elevation of the ground right here is about five. Wait a minute, didn't you say that the base flood elevation was eight?
You did.
You can do the math on that. But the ridge line for this garage is this way, from this way.
All right.
And so what's happened, what we have here is basically this, this building blocks the pool. Of course, the pool is just flat. We're not putting it up in the air like you see somebody who's already above ground. And we put all of the equipment behind the garage so you don't see it from the roof. All right, so now we'll get to the part about the fence. Because every pool has to have a fence around.
Right.
We all know that from New York State Building Program. So where do we put the fence? Well, we could put the fence right around the pool, but you're gonna see it from the river. Because it's going to be, if you can?
It's gonna be higher.
It's gonna be like the deer run along the top of the ridge line. You can see them. So what we propose to do is to put, and this is where the twelve feet comes in, put this section of the fence down so that when you look from the river, behind the fence is photography going up.
Right, it'll be right into the?
Right.
It'll blend in.
Blend in. And then when you get up to the top, try and, try to put it perpendicular to the river to minimize it. Then when you get over to the other side, try to follow the contour around.
Does the contour to, let's see, the contour to the east of the pool, does that fall off again?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes. Yep, this is eleven, this is twelve, eleven, then you get to ten.
But the, but the fence, I guess my point is the fence on the west side of the pool is?
Low.
I'm sorry, east side, I beg your pardon?
The other west side, okay.
Yeah, the other west side. Will be higher.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will. It could be down over the backside. Do that too.
I'll total fence, six?
No.
Four.
Four?
I don't even think it's that.
I thought they had it at four.
Maybe, maybe it's forty-four now.
Yeah, something like that.
Forty-two inches, some crazy number.
All right.
All right?
Now, just a silly question. The property goes all the way back.
Self-closing door.
Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all, that's all federal wetland.
Okay.
And it's below, this is the Mean High Watermark of Hudson River. And the elevations in here are, what do you?
There's draining down this one.
How far is the pool from the house?
From the house?
Yeah.
Which is on the twenty scale, so. Sorry, eight inches.
That was my name in your district.
I know, negro. A hundred and sixty feet. Something like that, it's quite new.
Just, just give up the name.
Yes.
Thank you, Ted. Pete, was that once the Raymond's house that got demolished?
No, 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 no. That's not the old Raymond house. It's the old Raymond house because the mall is now the location of the Fryman mansion.
Oh, so is it north or south here?
North.
This is south, right?
This is the southern end of that peninsula.
Okay.
There are, there's this house, there's two other houses, and then there's the Fryman mansion. Looks like I had a while ago.
I'm trying to see where, I'm still trying to figure out where this is. Okay.
Okay. You know where Barter Rock is?
Where who?
Barter Rock.
It's right here.
It's down, Barter Rock is down, let's see, way down there, about where you sit.
Okay.
About National Park.
Okay.
The one you can drive down to between Monday and Thursday, between nine and four.
Is that the one with the new entrance? No, I'm thinking of something else. Okay, all right, doesn't matter. Okay. So this is really the, okay.
Yeah.
What a project.
May I ask, how?
Go ahead, sure.
The fence towards the river on the west side, how far is that from the pool when it's like down the slope?
Well, probably, I'm gonna say twenty-five feet.
Public hearing?
I just don't know offhand if there's a requirement that the fence has to be within a certain distance of the water because it's a safety concern?
I don't, they just have to not be able to get to it.
Okay.
And of course, the fence goes to the corner of the building, so you have the building and then the fence starts again.
Okay.
Any self-closing gates?
It's a corral.
They have to be self-closing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it has to be.
Yeah. All right, so we're really looking for a variance on the, over the hundred feet, which is gonna come down into this?
Here, here's the variance.
Four feet from one hundred to twelve. Oh, fence, okay. Okay. The house itself is?
Ten feet.
When was the house built?
Nineteen eighty-two. It was showing floor.
In the house?
In the house.
And it's doing?
Kids swim.
And what does it do now?
Um, nothing because they turned it into a dance floor.
Okay.
Not the, the former.
Okay, all right. Okay.
And if you read the documents, um, these, well, poor souls, thought they were gonna, you know, build a pool. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate to make the pool. And that was before the prices started to jump.
Yeah.
Just for the pool?
Yeah, it was before.
Or revise it. Yeah, okay.
Jesus.
It would be very helpful to, if we arrange a visit?
Why certainly.
Okay.
Coffee would be good, Ted.
What? Yeah, well, as long as you don't want to get your feet wet. No, yeah, we can.
Okay, because I, I hear what you're saying, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah, I'm sure. And you know, when you see it, oh, yeah, okay.
I think that would be very helpful. All your runoff is moving down toward the river, obviously. Well, and the wetland is moving south, moving?
It goes this way.
South, okay. Water around the pool, I mean, for rain, is it gonna, again, it's gonna move west, right? Or is it?
Actually, it's gonna, around the, around the pool, it's gonna go this way and this way. Come on the outside.
Okay.
The way, the way the runoff is right now, this is pretty much the top of the ridge line right there.
Okay.
So it goes, it's gonna continue to go in the same direction.
Rainwater will fill the evaporation that they lost over the last two weeks, would I know that?
Maybe.
I'm praying for rain.
You've got a different, okay. All right, questions?
Yeah.
So we do need to set a public hearing. This was just an introduction.
So we'll set, we then would move to set a public hearing for August?
August twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Is a move, a motion is a second?
A motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, so we'll set a public hearing for this. And I think at the same time, we'll set a visit so we can get a visit before the public hearing?
Sure.
Would be, we can set that up.
We'll organize that tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks for the presentation, it's great.
Yeah, no, it's great.
There's a, there's a, right here, a very big oak tree. So originally, they wanted to kind of have it this way and so we located the oak tree in the drip line, the oak tree, and said, you know what? You better stay away.
When you say the drip line?
Yeah, the, you know, the drip line of the tree, and all the branches go out.
Oh, okay, okay.
You wanna stay outside the drip line because of the root system.
The circle were the last group.
Uh huh.
Okay, gotcha. At least technical terms are...
Oh, yeah.
All right, good. Any, nothing? We have anything?
No.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Very, very interesting project.
So you're gonna hold on me on what date, and I'm hoping me.
Me.
Me at the other scene in Rock.
Okay. Good, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So we've set a public hearing, okay. We have anything else? Madam Secretary, anything else? Counsel?
Nothing outside of a big thank you to Serena.
Yes.
For all of her work. We will miss you. I will definitely miss you.
We will all miss you. We seriously want to thank you for all the work you've done in helping organize our minds and our work, and it's made a significant difference in terms of...
We are better because you were here.
Yeah.
We truly are, and we thank you for that. And would you reconsider?
No.
I would then therefore entertain a motion for adjournment.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Long meeting.